Hi, Janet.
Hi Becky, hi everybody. How was your trip?
It was good. It was kind of quick, but yeah, good.
I used to love traveling in my former job.
Yeah.
Yeah, now I don't go anywhere, just Berry to Woodbury.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Joe. Is anyone coming to the concert tonight?
What concert would that be?
Ah, Los Lobos is playing upstairs at the Opera House tonight.
Oh, fun.
They've been warming up all afternoon. It's salsa kind of cool music.
Yeah, I wasn't going to that, but I've heard them before. They're really good.
Are they? Yeah. The city manager is pretty excited because that's kind of along his Argentinian roots. He's pretty excited to go tonight, so.
Nice.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
I kind of got concerted out last night. We ended up to see Peter Gabriel in Montreal.
Oh, how phenomenal.
He played for three hours.
Wow.
Like maybe a 20 minute break, but yeah, he was on for a long time and he's like 75, so that's like no mean feat.
Right.
But it was, yeah, it was a good show.
Good. Two, three, four, five. Who are we missing?
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Rosemary.
I know, we know David's not going to be here.
Oh, that's right. So, everybody who should be here is here.
All right. Well then, we will call our meeting to order. Um, welcome everyone. As you may have seen in our meeting packet, Michael has resigned from the commission, so I am stepping in and acting as chair for this meeting. Uh, but hopefully by the end of this, we will have voted in a new chair. And uh, this will be a one-time, one-time deal for me. Um, so bear with me.
You're, you're always.
Absolutely. Thanks. Um, so bear with me. It's been a while since I conducted an open meeting. Um, so Janet, please jump in if we're not following protocol. Um, so I think next is any adjustments that we need to make to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Okay. Doesn't look like anybody else does. Uh, so then we will move to approval of the minutes from August 10th, 2023. I will entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move to approve.
Thanks. And a second or any discussion?
A second.
Great, thank you.
I just missed, was that Caitlin who moved to approve? I just, I think I missed that detail, just so I get it correctly. Thank you.
Yes, and Rosemary seconded. All in favor, please, I think we have, since we're video, we need to raise our hands. So that we can see it visually. Great, it looks like that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Is there any public comment for anything that is not on our agenda this evening? Yes, Representative Anthony.
Uh, thank you very much. It does slightly overlap with a, um, a bit of activity that the council disposed of on Tuesday, namely parking issues. Uh, it had come up in many a discussion that I participated in. Uh, and I think at the time died for lack of a majority vote, namely to revisit and I would urge actually follow Burlington's lead and remove altogether in every residential zone, the minimum number of spaces per dwelling unit that currently, um, I'd say plagues, uh, if you like, uh, increasing density, et cetera, et cetera, that each of you say you favor. So happy to, to, um, uh, plant that flag publicly if you wish in other quarters. Uh, but I think it deserves now that there has been some change in the membership. Uh, it deserves revisiting to see if it still does not get legs, as they say. Uh, I firmly believe, and I think your previous discussions illustrate that while it's not your jurisdiction, a closely allied, if you like, policy is the winter traffic, uh, or sorry, winter traffic parking ban. And I would again urge that while not being prescriptive, some urging of a change in city policy, though it's not yours to enact, uh, I would urge that you suggest to the council that these things are, if you like, mutually reinforcing. And so, uh, some alternative, whether it's Burlington's model, Montpelier's model, uh, something that's low-tech, would, would perhaps at least trigger a debate at the council level and revisit that. I understand that it takes some, uh, how shall I say lobbying with the DPW crew. Um, as you well know, they were uneasy with the reconstruction of Main Street with the pedestrian bump outs because it makes their job more difficult. This does too, but after all, we managed to overcome that. Pedestrian bump out, so I would suspect with some thoughtfulness and low-tech and not heavy a capital investment like flashing lights, we should be able to do it. So thank you. That's my two cents of items that are not heretofore on the agenda.
Thanks, Peter. Um, Joe, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, so just a couple, yeah, comments on that. Yeah, I think as far as the, the ADU portion, yeah, we'll get, we'll talk about that when we get to that agenda item. I think we are sympathetic to the idea of removing parking completely. Something we've sort of decided on, but I know it's been talked about before. And I know the, um, winter parking stuff has been talked about before. Um, and I just kind of recall from our previous discussions that the, um, the parking in general, I think, was going to be kind of part of the, the, um, sort of the two grant discussions, because I think one of those could definitely apply to that. And so I think we'll get an update from Jenna on the status of the RFPs for those today, and that might be a kind of plan to, not a plan, but give us a way to sort of move forward on that idea. But I think that's definitely something we're at least sympathetic to talking about, definitely, because it's come up before.
Yes, and I would just add that I think we, we did not take any action on that, Peter, because we expected that that would be part of the conversation for one of the grants. I can't remember the name of it. But it's kind of looking at our zoning as a whole and updating it to, to kind of match where we want to be going as a community. Um, and so definitely, I think parking was on the agenda for that conversation.
I, I, I would just, if, uh, if I may, uh, remind the group unless Janet disagrees, uh, that the, um, winter parking is actually part of the general ordinance, is not part of the zoning article. And so frankly, I, I think you could make a recommendation, but in the end, it would be the council who would have to essentially act both on submission by yourselves as a zoning reform, uh, but also in tandem decide whether or not some alternative to the dated, if you will, in two senses, uh, current regulation is appropriate. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Any other public comment on issues that aren't on the agenda? Okay, I don't see any. Um, so we'll continue to agenda item number five, which is old business. And first up there is the status of the RFPs. It looks like responses were due today at 4:30?
Yes.
Janet?
Yeah. So I have good news and bad news. So I got one response from VHB engineers and planners for the, planning grant, and the planning grant was, is for the North Main to Summer Street Plan Revision. So we at least got a response on that, um, but we got one. So we've met the requirements by the procurement policy. And I will share that out early next week. Um, we did not get any responses on the Bylaw Mod Grant, RFP. And I had spoken with the mayor, um, earlier in the week, maybe it was last week. And he said, the, the challenge to get a consultant right now is crazy. So I think my first step is to, uh, apply to ACCD for an extension and then RFP again, and see if I could get more responses. And widen my scope to Northern Massachusetts, all of New Hampshire, Eastern New York, to see if we can get other consultants rather than rely on those tried and true that know Vermont municipalities and our zoning. So, um, and I welcome any suggestions, comments, um, just to keep this one moving. But, uh, as David reminded you all a few months ago, we knew this was going to happen. We were hoping it wasn't going to happen. So, um, so that's where we're at right now.
I, I think that plan sounds good. Um, do we need a motion to that effect, or is that something you can do on your own?
I can do that on my own.
But yeah, I think that plan sounds good unless someone else has any other feedback on it. I definitely think it's a good idea to keep it moving, and it's unfortunate we didn't get a response yet, but I think it's worth trying again.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you, Joe.
And Janet, the consultant that responded on the other one, are they qualified to do the work of the, um, bylaws grant?
Um, I'm honestly not sure. They might be, and that's a, uh, if you're, the segue into suggesting if, if I could plant the seed with them, I definitely will and see if maybe they have someone else on staff that could help us.
Right, yeah, yeah. Or if they would be willing to do like both projects, you know, kind of combine them into one, one project with the city.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
And I do just have a couple of questions on the first one that we did get an RFP for. Um, so you said you'll, you'll start, you'll send that as sort of a more official notice on that, next week, you said?
Yeah, I'm taking tomorrow off, but Monday it's going to go out to everybody.
Oh, that's fine. Um, so I recall, you know, in our last meeting, we had sort of set up a subcommittee to sort of interview that person that's, um, Becky, myself, and Rosemary. Um, so I assume once you do that, you can, we can look at scheduling a, an initial meeting for that. Uh, and because that's on a quorum, we don't need to warn that, correct? Because it's only three of the members. Okay.
Right. Um, another thought is because you didn't have any competing responses, is you don't necessarily have to interview them if you don't want to. So just keep that in mind. Interviews are usually for competing responses, but, um, I, I think, uh, whatever you'd like to do, uh, we will follow your lead on the subcommittee.
Okay, well, we could maybe discuss that amongst ourselves like an email separately, but I feel it would be still, even if it's not really a formal interview, I still think it might be valuable to have a meeting just so we can sort of, you know, get in touch with them and get feel things out and whatnot.
Certainly.
But we can feel that out. We don't have to decide it right now.
And that's all I had on that agenda item, Becky, unless there's more.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if there were any other questions or comments from the commission. Doesn't look like it. Okay. Next is the accessory dwelling unit, public reading at council. And Janet, do you want, oh, you're going to give an update? Yeah, that'd be great.
Janet was there too. She can start and then I'll add then.
Um, yes. Uh, so ultimately what it boiled down to was, um, the, the way it was warned on city council agenda uh, was incorrect, uh, because they, they needed to, am I getting them mixed up, Joe?
No, you sound good so far.
They, they, the impression was that they could rescind the vote from two weeks ago and then move immediately into a second reading and public hearing. And that's not how it works. They can rescind their vote and they start over again at a first reading and public hearing. It does not need to come back to us.
So that's my understanding as well. So I'm guessing, obviously, we don't have an agenda for the next council meeting yet, but I'm assuming it'll be in the next council meeting in two weeks. And it's basically a first reading again. Go ahead.
It's next week, and it's my understanding it's going to be on.
Okay.
So, as soon as I see that agenda, or you folks want to check, I'm told it's on for this coming Tuesday, the 19th.
Yeah, I think as before, if any of us can sort of be there to, to speak to it, that'd be helpful. I will, I plan to be.
Yes, it, it'll be a rinse and repeat of, of two weeks ago, but, um, I think it, it'll be worthy to be able to, to take our stand and, and um, point out why we think this is a, a good idea, our changes, they're, they're minimal at best.
I agree, and I, um, and I think also now we're sort of prepared for what the concerns that might come up, because honestly, this was probably a little naive, but I sort of expected the last one to just breeze right through because it seemed to me as such a no-brainer, to put it bluntly.
And I just want to back up. Is everyone clear about what happened? Like, are there any questions about the process that we've been through so far? Okay, Rosemary, go ahead.
Uh, no, I'm clear on that. Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, I, I'm not willing at the moment anyway, to, uh, not proceed with our original plan. I just want to, whether it was Lozon or Amel or whoever our counselor was, is that, I just want to make sure we are, we're still, uh, in sync with our original decision. Um, I think the argument is, there should be, we should keep the parking ordinance or whatever it is, the 1.4 per bedroom, whatever the, that, that formula was. But I just want to make sure there's, there shouldn't be any discussion. I mean, Janet, I, I guess I'm looking to you in the interim, just, I mean, is there any argument? Because it's going to come up again. I think we need to be prepared.
Yes, um, it is going to come up again, and it is all about the parking. To follow the rules, you need to show one more parking space at a single-family owner-occupied dwelling for an ADU up to two bedrooms. But my argument Tuesday night is going to be, in the last three and a half years, we've permitted three ADUs. So it's not like they're pouring through the door and we have a parking problem. We already have people who are unhappy with the amount of parking on the street in the non-parking ban times. So to, to litter up our, our, um, our neighborhoods is, um, not necessarily a fair statement to all neighborhoods, right? So I think we need to come prepared to talk about why we believe this is a really good thing. And, um, just for anyone who wasn't there, it was a three to three tie vote, so that's why it failed over the parking sentence only.
That was the main.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
This is just so, I, I'm with Joe. I just really didn't think it was going to be a problem. And I was very surprised.
I did, yeah.
And I think procedurally, I'm not sure if I understood part of your question, Rosemary. I think you were sort of suggesting we could possibly discuss further updates to it or changes to it. I think procedurally, I don't think that's even a possibility right now, because we've already approved it to go to council and it's going to go to first reading again. Uh, I think the only time that we would discuss possible changes to it in our forum is if council rejects it again.
I just want to be prepared for the next.
That's fine. I was just trying to.
That's all. I'm not, when someone gives an argument, it's just like, well, okay, he had it, he had an argument or concern about it. Um, I just wanted to be sure we're all still on board and we're all, and another thing about, if I may, Joe, was, uh, wasn't it Samantha Hiscoc who was on, um, one of our, attended one of our meetings, and she was part of this discussion? She rents a lot of, a lot of apartment buildings, and she said she rarely had people with cars even. So I think that, does anybody remember sort of swaying us also in that regard as well? I, I, I'm just trying to.
I recall that she attended a fair number of our meetings for a while. I don't recall exactly what she said.
Okay, well, anyway.
She may have. I'm not, I'm not saying she did or didn't. I'm just saying I don't, I don't remember for sure exactly what she said.
That's fine. I, I just wanted to be sure we're all still all on board. Thank you.
And just to be clear, I wasn't sort of second guessing what you're saying. I was just trying to understand what, guess so. Just want the same page.
Okay, great. So I plan to be at the city council meeting next week. Um, Janet, the other thing that I was thinking about is most of the changes that we made were so that we complied with the new state law. Isn't that right? And I just wondered if we also needed, if, if that would also be worth reiterating next week at city council that, um, and I don't know if there's any consequences to not being in compliance, like the, that if we drag this out further, if that precludes the city from, I don't know, any kind of state funding? Um, and if so, whether that's worth, um, raising next week.
Uh, I'll go back and look, because I remember attending a seminar put on by ACCD when ADUs were a super hot topic, I believe it was back in maybe 2021. Um, I can resurrect some of that. Um, there was handouts and there were PowerPoints, um, so well put together. The legislation at the time didn't change the parking. The parking was our voluntary means to say it would be a lot easier to permit an ADU if you didn't hang somebody up on one parking space. So, and I can absolutely reiterate that Tuesday if I have the opportunity.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's been a while, but my recollection is that some of the changes, I think, were, were being changed to, um, to basically match state law. I don't think that would be a deal breaker, because I think if, if something that we do doesn't agree with state law, then state law just overrides it. It's my understanding. So I don't think that would be a deal breaker. And even if it was, I don't think, I think the only stumbling block at all from council was on the parking issue. None of the other changes were a problem. So if for some reason the parking is still a problem, I don't think that would impede the other changes going through.
Right, but doesn't that mean we have to go through this whole process again? I think that's what I'm, what I'm thinking about, like, is if they reject it because they, they still don't like parking, then we have to start our process all over again, even to make the changes to comply with the state law. That, that's what I'm thinking about. That's, yeah.
That would be one possibility. They could also, um, make a suggestion on their own to change it. I think, like, I think they tried to do that last time in that field. Uh, so that could happen too. And also, I also want to point out too, like, um, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Janet, but this is still just first reading. So even if it passes this upcoming meeting, that does not push it into law, or not law, that's hardly the right word, but, um, there's still, there's still a second reading, so there's still time to discuss it, to get input from the public and whatnot. So it's not like if, even if it approves this time, it's not just automatically going through. And I think that might be a valid point to bring up next week too, if anyone is still, um, if anyone in council is still, um, concerned about it, it might be worth emphasizing that this is still not, even if it passes next week, it's still not a done deal. There's still a chance to, to reject it the following meeting. Or to get feedback from the public or any number of things. So I think that's worth bringing up, maybe.
Yep, Joe is correct. Um, usually at the first reading is when you get it all, all the kinks worked out and you get, everybody's on board with whatever is the final lay of the land. And the second reading and public hearing is, is, should just be a matter of motions and seconds and approvals.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing any other hands up. Um, so we'll move on to, uh, item number five, C, which is the North Main to Summer Street Plan. And I think, um, this is one of the projects that, the RFP where we have a response. Um, and at one of our previous meetings, we talked about doing a site visit, uh, before it gets too cold, uh, to go and, and poke around and look at things in real life. Um, so I think that's what we're discussing is the possibility, uh, potentially of using our next meeting to do a site visit. Or if we'd like to do that sooner, I think we could also organize a special meeting to do that. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I would suggest we wait for David to return. Is he back in October?
I assume so.
Or, I thought he said the month of September he was going to be gone. I don't know. I just think he brings such value in the way of history of the planning commission, the, the, the policies that were created over the last few years. And, and just for, for, I just think it'd be good to consider waiting for him.
Um, waiting for him to even decide whether we're going to do that or making sure that he can join us for that?
No, I, I've, no, that he, that we go ahead with planning it, but hopefully he's here in October.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Uh, I believe he will be back, because I, he, he indicated to me that he was missing the next meeting, but I don't think he was going to miss two.
I think September, yeah, was when he was going to be gone. Thanks, Joe. I, I remember that too.
Great, Caitlin?
Um, I, I just wanted to voice my enthusiasm for this idea of doing a site visit. I think it's a, a great idea. And I, you know, waiting until we have, um, the full complement of many members makes sense to me.
Great. Thank you. So it sounds like there's interest in a site visit. And Janet, is that, is that okay to plan that as part of our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Or as our next meeting?
Okay, sure. It can be part of, it can be the meeting. It's however, uh, you right now or the chair in half an hour wants to do it.
Sounds good. So we will tentatively plan on doing a site visit at our next meeting, uh, which is October 12th at the moment. Um, and it might help, I think we were all on the committee when the, maybe we weren't. Janet, it would be helpful if ahead of that meeting, you could send around the summer, the original Summer Street Plan. Um, it was in one of our packets a couple of months ago, I think, but Caitlin, you may not have gotten that.
I can send it around, and I'll also send you the link of where it's parked on the website.
Oh, yeah.
So another, another thought on this vein is, do you, is it premature to potentially ask for someone from the, uh, response team from VHB to join us, or do you want to do this exclusively just the planning commission? Because remember, we, we are going to ask them to dive in quickly, because they've got a year to do this, to meet the grant requirements. Something to think about.
I think it would be appropriate to include them if they're available. I don't know if anyone disagrees, but that seems like a good idea.
I do. Pardon, I'm having a brain cramp. What's VHB? Oh, my word.
No, that's okay. So.
I'm going to be embarrassed.
No, uh, VHB is an acronym for the name of the company. It's, um, Van Ass, Hagen and Brogan or something. It's like Swedish names. So then we go by that, the acronym.
Perfect, thank you.
Where are they based at? I've just out of curiosity.
I'm pretty sure it's Burlington.
Okay. Not a big, yeah, I'm just curious how local they were.
Chittenden County.
I guess that's close enough.
I think there are people that, uh, work for VHB now that were on the, uh, that, that were with the firm that did the plan back in 2012.
Oh, that'd be good then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely seems appropriate to include them, especially as you say, if they have, can have a limited time to, to give their recommendations of getting them up to speed as quickly as possible is a good idea.
Agree.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we will make note of that and communicate that to whoever is our chair. Um, uh, excellent. Is there anything else that we need to discuss with that, Janet? Okay. Um, so new business, uh, is the next item on our agenda. Um, and as you should have seen, our chair has resigned. And according to our bylaws, we need to. And according to our bylaws, we need to elect a new chair at this meeting. And then that person will take the reins uh for our next meeting. But the way of things. Okay. Thank you, Janet. Um, and so I think I will entertain nominations for a new chair.
Yeah. So I have been in contact with with David. I let him know that Michael resigned and we talked a little bit. Um, and he said he is um good to step up to chair if if everybody agrees with that. And he is also okay with us nominating him in his absence. So I will nominate David Sickel to be chair.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Raylene. And uh, any discussion? Great. Then uh, we will take a vote on the nomination of David Sichul as our chair. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand on the video so we can see that. Great. And we've got a hand from Raylene. Thank you. So that is unanimous. Um, we'll congratulate David from afar. I believe he's on a European adventure, so um.
That's great.
Yeah.
Can I just say something? Um, I I'm sorry, Michael resigned. I thought he brought a lot of uh he too, like David, brought brought a lot of history and and it's really, it's too bad. I feel bad about it. But Joe, I'm glad you asked David about that because that was going to be my motion that we wait and ask him. So uh, thank you. I think I think this is a good move for us.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I agree. Michael's a big loss. Um, I I feel that there is just a lot of different frustrations he's been dealing with and sort of there is like just a straw that broke the camel's back and he just needed to back off from things. Um. My feeling is I don't want to speak for him, but my feeling is that after he's had some time to kind of take a breather and recenter himself, he'll he will probably rejoin, you know, city business in whatever way he can. So I don't think he's gone. I think he's just taking a break. But.
Great. Excellent. Um, so next on our agenda is the Neighborhood Development Area Designation Discussion. And Joe, I think this is over to you.
Yeah, so I had originally forwarded forwarded in um some information I got on this to Janet. And before I get into that, Jan, I think you already had some information on it. So do you want to start with that? It also looks like there's sort of two pieces to this. Um, but do you have any initial initial um info to start us off?
Sure. Uh, so a neighborhood uh designation area is similar to um, the uh, we have a designation already in Berry City, which is our downtown. So this would be another designation for neighborhood areas. And it's probably been five or six years when I started this once already. Uh, and I met with someone uh from ACCD who is no longer there. She retired. And we started the whole first process about um, there are certain um slope requirements. There's all there's all these little pieces and parts to figuring out where is your neighborhood going to be. And at the time I did this with her, her name was Faith. Uh, Faith? I don't remember. Um, it was. Okay. Um. We the neighborhoods that we came up with, we almost look like Swiss cheese. And to meet, so they're supposed to touch in some fashion. And we were going to try to figure out how to make all these little different neighborhoods work as one big neighborhood. And um and then staffing issues get in the way. So that's, it's been started. We'll start again. Um. But what it what a neighborhood designation area does, just like the downtown, it assists the people that live there um qualify for grants. Um uh, processes are easier. Where am I failing, Caitlin? Um, it makes things easier.
Yeah, so I can speak to this a little bit since it's um a program that's run out of the department I work in. I I don't manage the program, so I don't know all of the ins and outs and details, but um, it is, it's an incentive based designation, just like the downtown designation is. It doesn't add any kind of um regulatory, anything from the state level. Um, we at the municipal level still have all of power to make the decisions about what happens in our community. Um, but it does open the door to certain types of incentives and benefits um for these areas that are designated. And the focus of those um incentives in the neighborhood development areas is on housing um and making it easier to build new housing, um, making it uh possible to rehabilitate existing housing. Um, so I I would be really in favor of pursuing this for Berry City.
Yeah, it seems like a really good idea. And I'm glad you spoke up because the email that came to me, I think, was originally it was forwarded to me by by Mayor Hemrick, but I think it was originally sent by you. Um, so I was going to ask if you could give us some feedback. So thank you. Um, and it seems like there's sort of two pieces to this. So there's the initial designation, which I guess we would have to pursue as its own thing. And then once we have that, then it kind of opens up other things that can be pursued. So it's sort of a two-step process, if I understand it correctly. Is that right?
Yeah, exactly. We would get the designation and that would open the door to, you know, other incentives, opportunities that we could apply for.
Okay. Yeah, and I had originally sort of included it just because it was relatively less than a thing, just so we could sort of discuss it and decide if we wanted to move on it or look into it more. So I'm not sure of sort of what we think a next step might be, if that's something we actively want to start pursuing, or if we want to maybe sit um sleep on it and discuss it more in the next meeting and then decide. Um, I'm kind of open to different ideas. So curious what everybody else thinks.
Rosemary, go ahead.
Uh, we are talking about financial incentives, right? Is that what you mean?
Um, there are some financial incentives, but also some permitting uh incentives. So reduce permitting um
I see.
Things you have to go through at the state level.
Is there anything we can get it now that maybe describes a little bit more about this? Or is it something?
There were a couple pages at the back of our packet.
Oh, there were. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't get past the minutes uh of the council meeting. So thank you. Thanks. I'll look at that. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, that's in there. And the other thing that I have is the the PDF in the email that was forwarded to me or a PDF in the email that was forwarded to me was sort of about um tax credits, which, you know, is a definite financial incentive. So I don't think that file was in the packet. So I can forward that to everyone so you can take a look at it.
Um, can I just ask Janet? It sounds like this is something that we would be asking you, we, the planning commission would be asking you to pursue, and there's not much that we, the planning commission, would be doing other than saying, this looks like a great idea. Can you do it? Um, and I'm just, I'm wondering how realistic that is, given the two um special projects we're already pursuing and um that you're still dealing with the fallout of the flood. You know, like, do we need to prioritize some things?
I think it needs to be done. I'm tired of seeing it on my to-do list and my work plan that that keeps turning over. Um, I I would be all for moving it up and and doing more work on it um just because that, you know. I think the flood has exacerbated exacerbated a lot of um eye opening, shall we say, and what what else is out there? And I think this is a perfect example for me to say to um other projects, no, I I need to do this.
Okay.
Um, following up from that. Sorry, go ahead. I'll I'll add my.
Okay. Uh, thanks. Um, I just wanted to ask another question of whether there's anything the planning commission could do to help you with this. Like, are there things that, you know, little pieces of this that one or some of us could take on to help with?
There may be, and I won't know that till I get beyond where I was five or six years ago. Um, but I would love to be able to call upon each and all of you when the time comes. Um, and I think as a body, you're great to for me to be able to just show you my progress and what we're doing. Look for other suggestions, um comments, criticism, absolutely.
Yeah, that was actually my question. So um and I would definitely be prepared to to jump in and help anyway that's needed. So.
Likewise. Great. Thanks, everyone. Um, Janet, do we need to take any official um action on that or just having this conversation is? Okay, great. All right, we are on to agenda item number seven, which is to confirm the date of our next meeting, which is October twelfth. Anyone have any concerns about that date?
That sounds good. And we are tentatively planning that to be a on part of that to be an onsite visit. Second of where we are, or do we decide that when we set the next agenda?
I think we're tentatively deciding that and we'll we'll let David know. Uh, and then ultimately he gets to decide. Excellent. Okay. Uh, Janet, over to you for staff updates.
Um, yeah, I just have been um, it's been a lot of flood work. Um, a lot of grant work, um, a lot of, so some of the other grants that I work on, like the Downstreet Grants, the Turning Point Grants, they take up a lot of my time. Um, every once in a while, all of a sudden, there's a flood of things that have to occur and then it gets quiet again. So predominantly, my work has been um from the flood. And trying to get through and finish up determining substantial damage, um which is difficult and painful and will not be well received when I'm done. Um, Montpelier has the benefit of having one person now on a staff of four uh dedicated to substantial damage, substantial improvement. Um, so so when you listen to the news, it Montpelier is further ahead than we are uh just because of that one dedicated person. But um, I need to wrap that up because it's one of the things we'll be talking about at city council Tuesday night. We keep talking about it every time we have council, but um we need to get to the point where um uh I can definitively say this is the list. Turn it over to the um, the Rivers Program people and the State Flood Plan Manager. Uh, and the other thing, if any of you have been in city hall or have been listening to council members, this old uh, I pointed down the hallway. The old police station uh further down the hallway from me where I sit has been vacant and mothballed since the police moved out into their new digs. Um, I think twenty thirteen, maybe? Um, I'm not sure. I think that seems to be. No, it had to have been earlier than that because I got here in twenty twelve and they were already there. Maybe twenty oh three. I'm not sure. Um, the city manager uh got that space renovated um for the long-term recovery folks. So there's a new group um of volunteers in the city who is going to be um spearheading Capstone FEMA Downstreet and and they're going to be networking out of that space likely for the next six months to a year. So um, I encourage everybody to stop by and see the space. It's absolutely beautiful. I don't know what it looked like before when it was a police station. Um, but it is beautiful and welcoming and pretty excited to be able to say that we've got a, we're going to have this center here in city hall to continue to assist our residents.
Yeah, that's great. I I had heard that in the last meeting and that was, that was the um groups that Amanda Guston's a part of, right? That's, yeah, it sounded like, yeah, I think someone there mentioned that they were using that space and that's really great. It's a great use of that space. Um, I know it was in rough shape for a while, so I'm glad to see that it's in better shape now. So I'll be curious to take a look at it, too.
So thanks, Janet. Any questions for Janet? All right. Uh, we have a round table for the commissioners. If anyone has anything they'd like to raise.
Um, yeah, I have I have something. Um, so, yeah, we already talked about about Michael leaving and how that's kind of a loss. And we'd also, I just mentioned Amanda and she left, I think late last year, right? I don't forget exactly when. Um, so sort of with that, we have, we have sort of lost a lot of institutional knowledge. Uh, we still have David, which is great. But I think um, the rest of us, I think the longest any of us, I think, has been here is about a year, maybe a little over a year, aside from David. So there's, yeah, I think um so we're all relatively new to this. And I think now we're all in kind of a position where a lot of the people that we sort of relied on to um to carry us forward just aren't here. So I think um it's a great opportunity for all of us to kind of maybe to step forward and kind of take a proper, I mean, not a proper place. That's not the right word. So I think we've been doing that already, but just to take a bigger, a bigger part of things and um really dig into it. I'm not kind of, I was, I was personally kind of seeing that as um both a challenge and an opportunity, and I'm looking forward to both.
Thanks, Joe. Rosemary?
I wish Janet um a nice day off. Well deserved, I'm sure. I hope you can enjoy yourself. Um, I'm happy to see Tess Taylor's on. I'm wondering who Steven is. I don't know if we record people that have from the public that are visiting. Do you know?
Only if they choose to speak.
Oh.
Remember, we're a public meeting, so anybody can attend.
Yeah, well, no, I understand that. I'm just curious who it was. And.
If you would like to tell us who you are, you're welcome to do that.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
It actually confirms that my the way I've been handling the ministry, Janet, I think is exactly that. I only make a note of someone's presence if they actually speak. So that's good to know that I was doing that correctly.
Yes, and just to further that vein, um uh, the city manager advertised for vacancies uh the uh for a period of time. And that ended Tuesday and we did not get anybody for the planning commission. Um, but I still have one open seat on the Development Review Board. Uh, so I think I I'm going to ask him to re-advertise sooner rather than later, so we can get our number back up to seven.
I think we can. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll say, I think we should be able to find someone because as I recall with the last round of nominations, we had extra people who we sort of had to turn away because spots were full. Um, and it's possible that that um, I mean, maybe they've lost interest in the meantime, but it's also possible that this was so fast. Because I think, I mean, it's basically just barely became known kind of more widely that that Michael left. So people might not have sort of been aware that that was happening. So hopefully if it gets extended, then we can or reestablish, then that would be good to get. Maybe someone will jump in of that crew. Because I recall we had some, there was at least two or three other candidates and all of them sounded good. So.
And I was just going to encourage everyone on the planning commission, if you have someone in your network or community who would be a good planning commissioner, to encourage them to apply.
Are there two seats open? Or is it just the one?
Should be just one.
Okay, thank you. Trying to think of that gentleman's name. He's a Berry guy, too. Anyway, thank you.
Great. Any other business from the planning commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. And thank you, Becky.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'll second.
Thanks. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hand. All opposed? Okay, that looked unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care. Bye.
Good night. Thank you, Becky.